I'm Brittany Loffhaus. I own and operate the Southern Scoop News. And when the legal woman voters stopped doing candidate forums whenever they disbanded a couple of years back, somehow I picked that up and I've done it for every election since then. Sometimes to my own detriment, but it is a labor of love. All the candidates were invited to attend tonight. I think this makes my sixth year doing these forums. And I've done these forums for every election, municipal elections, state elections, sheriff's elections, county elections, since, over the last six years. Making Media is always really trying to come out and film those. So people can always watch from home, or watch back, or whatever. Whenever I invited the candidates out to tonight's forum, I did have one candidate. Danny Antoine declined the invitation to attend. And then I did not have a response from Benny Cora Wallace. And John Sherrill told me that he would be here. And I have reached out to him today. I haven't heard back why, if he was coming, or if there was something to help him out. So I don't have an answer for that. I am grateful for the candidates who did come out tonight to answer these questions. I do the format for these forums, the exact same every single year. The candidates do not know the questions before they get here. I do not share the questions with anyone. I ask the questions, and I start as the moderator that will be given the time. All of the questions are given to all of the candidates. So there can't be just one gotcha question posed to a single candidate. I don't think that's fair, and I think that shuts down public discourse, and that's not what the purpose of this meeting is. So every candidate will have two minutes. I'll ask a question. Every candidate will be given two minutes to respond to that question. And then we will be able to move on. Fortunately, since we do not have as many candidates, that means there's more time for more questions. So we'll get to learn a lot about the three gentlemen who gave us their time tonight. I do want to take a moment to allow, there's a candidate for school board who is here, and that is the only other candidate that I see here tonight. So I do want to allow her an opportunity to introduce herself and to tell you about her running for school board before we begin. So it's Lassiter. Do you want to come up there? Can you hear me?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay. For the sake of the camera, I want you to come up here.
No, I know.
That way the folks at home can hear you.
Thank you. So, good evening. I'm Stephanie Lassiter. I am from Franklin. My maiden name is Hyder. I've had several people say, "Who is this Lassiter person?" Or, moving in. So I'm born and raised in the auto community. Graduated Franklin High School. Graduated, went to college, came back, and got involved in PTO as a mom 15 years ago. And have been involved in PTO and athletic clubs and other things ever since. And formally formed a social media group about September Schools about four years ago. That's on Facebook. And just have a passion for public education. So I ask for your vote. You can vote now, or you can wait till November 10. I really appreciate Brittany for the format today. And I appreciate the gentleman who joined us for this evening. So, yeah, I have some cards if you really want information. Thank you.
I also want to, mainly to the folks at home, I've had a couple of people text me and tell me that, you know, "Hey, Brittany, I'm watching at home." And those folks are much keener than I am, because that takes a lot of dedication. So I appreciate that. And I'm really grateful that Bobby is here to be able to provide that service to Macon County. And so, folks at home and folks here, in case you do not know, for the Macon County Board of Commissioners race, there are two different districts that will appear on the ballot. There is District One, which will have two candidates on the ballot that you can vote for. Then there is District Two that will appear on the ballot. Am I hearing this backwards? No. There's District Two that will have four candidates that you can vote for, but you pick two candidates. So a lot of people see that, they don't read that it says "pick two" beside it, and they pick one and they move on. However, for District Two on the Macon County Board of Commissioners, there are two seats up for election. So you will pick two candidates for that district. And we'll hear from those candidates tonight. So we're going to start by having each of the candidates introduce themselves, and they'll have two minutes just to tell you a little bit about themselves before we start asking the actual questions. So we will start with Mr. Beal. Would you like me to pass it? Whatever you want to do. Come up here, because it's better for the folks at home, sir. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you for coming out. We wish all the candidates good day. We thank Brittany for having this little forum to learn more about us. My name is Ronnie Beal. I'm seeking my fifth term as county commissioner, representing District Two. First of all, I can't tell you how much I've appreciated the support I've had over the past 16 years. I enjoy being a county commissioner. I work hard at it. We've accomplished some things. I was not going to run this year. A lot of you in this room know that. But then I decided to do that. As Gary Shields might say, there's a lot of unfinished business, and we've got a lot of that. And so, we are, we're running hard. I married 42 years to Sissy Beal. We had our first grandbaby yesterday, if you want to applaud that. Leo got here yesterday. Leo, Elius Higgs arrived yesterday about 1:00. So, that's more important than any apology. But I've been very active in a lot of things while I've been a commissioner. I've been blessed. I've served on a national, on the NACO Board of Health and Human Services, still there. I've been president of the North County Association of County Commissioners. Get to go to all 100 counties twice. If you ain't done that, don't do it. So it's been, I'm still on the Board of Directors of the North County Association of County Commissioners. My passion is mental health and substance abuse for lots of reasons. And we work hard at it. It's not like digging a ditch. It's hard to look behind you sometimes and see if you've done any good. But we're going to keep working. We've got some important meetings coming up next week. The opioid settlement, I was glad to be involved in that. North Carolina done things that nobody else did with the opioid money. It's over 18-year period. The seven far west counties got about 22 million. Macon County got about 3.3. But that's paid out over 18 years. We do have our first two payments. We've been meeting on a regional basis, and that's not come together as it gets, but we're working on it. To put some of this money, a percentage into a pot for regional basis. Because it affects Macon County. Those of us in the far west, we live in different places, y'all know. And during my years of service, I've tried my best to make you know where Macon County is. And I've been fairly successful. And when it comes to mental health and substance abuse, it affects every family. They talk about pandemics? Well, I don't know what the word is, act of pandemic, but mental health and substance abuse affects every family in this room, every family in Macon County, every family in this state. And it's just a matter of how far you look. So I look forward to serving you again for another four years in this election. I've been very fortunate to always serve with the majority of colleagues on the board that we've, we don't agree on everything, no. But when it comes to what's best for the economy and the improved quality of life, we've always seemed to be in agreement. So that's my goal, is real simple. My goal has always been, I never had access to ground. Evelyn Southers taught me how to read a budget. It took her about two weeks, but she finally got me through. And I've been around great people. And there's great people in this county. This county cannot operate tomorrow without volunteers. And we've got a lot to do. We're going to talk about schools, I'm sure. Broadband is essential, and the housing crisis that we're in. There's nothing to rent. We need to have that discussion. So we have lots to talk about, and my two minutes, I'm sure, is up. So thank you all for coming, and I look forward to the questions.
So with that, I failed to mention, and I did not time him. I should have known better. As long as I've known Mr. Beal, not me. Candidates, for you, when you hit a minute and a half, I'll put up the green or blue for the library. Once you hit your two minutes, I'll put up your white, just to wrap it up.
Now that Ronnie's taking all of our minutes?
Yeah.
Can we buy some more?
Just move on. Mr. Moore.
Ronnie, the good thing is I talk a lot faster than you, so I think I can get my word out. So my name is Jerry Moore. I'm your District One candidate for county commission. And as Ronnie said, thank you for being here. I think these types of meetings are so crucial to learning about your candidates, and learning about the issues, and solving our problems. Regardless of your party affiliation, as you well know, I'm an independent candidate. I consider myself a conservative independent. But I'm an independent candidate because I want to represent everybody. I want to hear all the ideas that people have. So it's been an exciting run. I started about a year ago getting signatures. I had to get 1,089 signatures to get on the ballot. And I did that by personally going around and getting signatures. And I had a lot of people that were willing to help me and do the same. So it was a different way to do it. If you run with a party, you go in and you pay your $150, and you get on there, and you have to run in the primary. This is the effort that you take in order to get on the general election as an unaffiliated, independent candidate. On District One, there's two candidates running. There's a Republican, John Sherrill, who's not here tonight, and myself. There's not a Democrat running. So if you're a Democrat, I think I'm a better choice for you. If you're a Republican, I definitely think I'm a better choice for you. So a little bit about me. I'm married to my wife Kay, who's right over there. Say hi, honey. For almost 30 years, and I have some of my family, my brother-in-law and sister-in-law from Arkansas, and my mother-in-law. And we have an international student living with us, Missiana. Wave to everybody, Missiana. So she's getting to experience a little bit of American politics. So from what she tells me about Bolivia, it's pretty easy here. So we've got it. I have four children. We raised them here in Macon County. We moved here in 2007 and purchased Kilwitz chocolates and ice cream. And I ran that business for 12 years. My oldest son is in the Navy. My next is a daughter, and she's teaching at an international school in Honduras. And then I have a student sophomore at Chapel Hill, and then one at home who's in ninth grade. For me, I have 12 years county and federal law enforcement experience before I got into the candy business. Go figure, that's not a natural transition, but you know, God does have a sense of humor, and He'll put you in places you never expect. I have five years insurance and financial services experience, along with three years that I'm currently operating Main Street Payments. It's a credit card processing service that I started and found in need as a small business. My education is, I have a Bachelor's of Arts in General Justice and a Master's in Public Administration, and I'm your county commission District One candidate. Mr. Shields, it's all yours.
Look in the picture where you are. See if I'm in there. It's my wife's birthday, and I'm not there. It could be a cold winter. Anyway, she's a teacher at Franklin High School, and she's learned how to work with this. I'm going to plug Stephanie. She's one of my former students at the level of death, and she's a great candidate. I guess I always want to look at, I'm invested. And when you're invested, you always have unfinished business, whatever what you're in. And when I graduated out of high school, Uncle Sam called me, and Uncle Sam calls, "You do what's right." And I'm a Vietnam veteran, Vietnam twice. Have 37 years of public education. 29 of those years are in Macon County's school system. And where I met a lot of these young people, I was a principal at Franklin High School for 21 years. And God does have a purpose for you, because I had more healing than they did, and I appreciate what they've done for me. Also, when I finished in 2010, retired after 29 years in Franklin, I went to the Macon County Board of Education for four years. Then also, then this is my eighth year as a Macon County Commissioner. And I've been a liaison to the Macon County Board of Education for eight years. If you do a little quick tabulation, that's 49 years that I've been involved in education, and that's the way it should be. Thank you. I saw the flag.
All right. So we will start with the first question. And this time, we will start with Mr. Moore. You will answer first, since Ronnie started before, and that's how we'll go each question. So the one after you, Mr. Shields will answer first. So the first question is, "Macon County has been looking at some big capital outlay projects, and when discussing funding for those projects, the questions regarding the fund balance seems to always come up. Why can't we use that to pay for it? What do you see as being the primary purpose of the county's fund balance, and how do you think it should be best utilized to serve the residents of Macon County?"
I don't have the exact figure, but I think our fund balance is right around $36 million. What the fund balance does for us is about three different things that I can think of. Number one, if you have that much money in the bank, you're going to get a good interest rate if you need to borrow money for infrastructure projects. If you don't have that money in the bank, you're going to pay the premium interest and pay more money in the long run. Number two, it does give you security. Something happens, I was at the school board and the joint meeting the other night, and Mr. Higden was talking about the potential failure of the wastewater system at Nana Hala School. It's not in the capital improvement plan, so it's not there. So something happens, you have that fund balance, you can go to it, and you can repair that. Because if you don't have that wastewater treatment plan, you can't have school. And we know how serious that is. So just in case you have an emergency, and I've heard Mr. Beal talk about it, you know, when Hurricane Ivan came through and Peak's Creek damaged, we were able to use some of that fund balance to make people whole before we got the government money, the federal government money back. So you've got to have a little money in savings. I know that I do. I've worked towards that. When I was 20 years old, I didn't. But as I matured, I had more money in the bank, just in case something happened. And I say that our county has matured with the fund balance that we currently have. So we are going to need to spend some of that fund balance, too. Franklin High School, significant project. The price tag from the architect, $118 million. It's a lot of money. Let's hope we can do it for less than that, but it could cost that much. So we're going to have to use some of that fund balance as a down payment. And I think that's what our commissioners have been doing, is putting that money aside for these types of projects. The other night, we talked about early childhood education at Highlands School. We have a crisis right now. 54 students on a waiting list to get into early childhood education. So thankfully, that was, well, it was not in the capital improvement plan, but since we had money in the fund balance, we can go there to start that project, because we have an overlapping project that if we didn't have that money to spend, we're going to spend it twice. It's going to cost us more money. So ultimately, the fund balance saves us money, not just sitting in the bank, but it does other things, too.
Good job. Who's next? Mr. Shields.
A fund balance is a savings account. That's all it is. If you're in a time of need, it's nice to have a fund balance or a savings account. I'm not going to steal Mr. Beal's word. You're going to hear this in a few minutes, seed corn, but that's all right. He's going to say that. But it is true that if your fund balance is strong, you will have a better percentage rate. There's a lot of things goes in your favor when the people like Davenport, who does our finances and stuff, when you have a fund balance. And I'm for it. We've been criticized, saying we've got too much in the fund balance. Well, things like Peak Creek and those emergencies that came up, you don't plan for those things. But we do have a good fund balance. And I think the commissioners, like Mr. Beal and the other commissioners, we understand it, that it is every once in a while tempting to get into. You don't want me to get into Franklin High School at this time. There may be something down the road, because I could spend a lot of time with that. Anyway, I want to say we do have a fund balance. We have an excellent county manager and a chief financial officer. Thank you very much.
I'm not going to say our fund balance is our seed corn, but it is. Let's go back, as far as your memory is, 2008. In 2008, I'd been on the board for two years. Remember, that was a really bad recession in 2008. We had to dip into the fund balance and take money out of the fund balance to keep from having to raise ad valorem taxes to meet our obligations for the state. But that obligation is 20% of your, you've got to have 20% of your budget in savings, in that fund balance. So today, you hear Mr. Moore say, "We've got about $36 million." Well, you take 20% off of that, which is basically $11 million. We've got $25 million, you do as a citizen, we do as citizens, to spend what we think it is. You never want to spend on recurring costs. You never want to spend for that money unless you know exactly where it's going, because it has taken 14 years since 2008 and '09 to build that fund balance back up. It's like you're a savings account. It takes a while to build it up. Let's talk a minute about Peak Creek. When Peak Creek disaster happened, we had to outlay right around $10 million, the county did, to help these folks for whatever needs it was. It took us nine years to get that money back from the federal government. Nine years. So that's just one good example. Another good example is if your fund balance is too low. We are one of the few counties who has a AA+ credit rating, one of the few counties. Why is that? We've tried to be, we've kept taxes at a very low rate. We have watched our money. I think we've been very frugal with our money. If you see the ad in the paper that, Mr. Gaston, I think, put the ad in the paper that I give lip service to all the things due to the government, well, he's part of, I read the budget. So that white card means 30 minutes? So, but the fund balance, if you didn't have it, there's some counties that join us right now that are struggling with their fund balance. And so we're blessed to have that, and I think that's come from a lot of things. So thank you.
This next question will start with Mr. Shields, and then we will go backwards up the table, so then Mr. Moore, then Mr. Beal. Keep you on your toes. Do you, as an individual, support the quarter cent sales tax referendum that is currently on the ballot? And if elected to the board and the referendum was approved by voters, would you honor that and implement it?
Yes. I am for the quarter cent sales tax. If you've seen the paper last week through the Franklin Press, you'll see that I've already checked my vote for yes. And here's the thing about this. If we go to the quarter cent sales tax, in a lot of situations, we're already paying that 7%. We're already paying the quarter cent. And at a certain point, you're not getting credit for that. It goes back to some other counties, and then they can spend it how they want to. But I think my biggest thing, I'm having a hard time explaining to people, is that that quarter cent sales tax, people, if that brings in $2 million, and you can only use it for capital outlay, capital outlay cost comes out of your ad valorem tax. So you've just decreased philosophically the ad valorem tax by technically $0.2. We're at $0.40 now, and if this was to come through, we can say that $0.2 will not have to be used, will have to be used towards capital outlay. And a lot of times, you'll see where it says designated towards schools, and that will be something that I will definitely be for. Thank you very much.
I can have Hazel. Are you going to have Hazel to have it in front of you? Will that help you? Want me to move right here?
No, okay.
I'll start off with yes. I think the quarter cent sales tax is a good idea. And it's your vote. It's your decision, but I voted for it. I've already voted. I voted for it. I've encouraged people to vote for it. And this is why. $700 million in retail spending in 2021. Of that, $320 million by people who do not live in Macon County. So 45% of that $2 million, or approximately $2 million, is going to be spent by people who don't live here, who won't directly benefit from our schools or our other infrastructure projects. It is simple math. You cannot say low taxes, period, and then not be for the quarter cent sales tax, because you're going to have to raise taxes somewhere else. You can't say you're for the school and say you're not for the quarter cent sales tax and low taxes, period. It doesn't work. You're going to have to raise property taxes. So right now, our property is valued at $8 billion. It's likely to go to $12 billion. We've had crazy real estate numbers throughout Macon County, Highlands, Franklin, Nana Hala. Everybody's been booming. So if you were to raise that, and like Mr. Shields said, I'll just second it, it's about $2.5 under the $8 billion property valuation to get $2 million. So we're going to get 45% of that paid by someone that doesn't live in this county, that's not going to benefit from those schools. And I will guarantee you on that board, if we get that quarter cent sales tax, we will use it for school infrastructure. You have my word. Thank you.
Well, I definitely support the quarter cent sales tax for a lot of reasons. Number one, how much money is that? On $500, it's in that little pamphlet, it's like $2 and some odd cents. And every county around us already has it. Every county in the seven far west counties has that. So where's that money going? It's going to those counties. We've given enough. I was held hostage in a convenience store business for a good long while. And the next time you go and buy something under $10, look at your receipt. Look at your receipt and see if it's not rounded up to the 7%. It is. So, and that's done by, don't matter what kind of cash register it is, that is pre-programmed. So you're already paying it to a lot. So it goes to the state and comes back. But we've got to, and what these fellows said are exactly right. It will save us on the ad valorem tax. If there's such thing as a fire tax, it is fair. It hits everybody the same amount. What cannot be taxed with that? Gasoline. That's a whole nother story. Healthcare. And there's several other things that cannot be taxed with a quarter cent sales tax. But the rest of it, and if it will reduce our ad valorem taxes for our folks in the future, but you cannot, my opponent, one of my opponents, Mr. Antoine, at first was for the quarter cent sales tax. I wished he was here. He was for it, but now he's definitely against it. How long have I got? 20 seconds?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. So now he's against the quarter cent sales tax. We don't know what changed, but if you want to do these things that we did in our community, and it's not just a new high school, there's other capital outlays. We're not just a little isolated county. We're a growing county, one of the few growing counties in the state. And we're going to, and to keep doing that, the quarter cent sales tax is a fire tax, and I certainly hope it passes, but it will be on your vote. Thank you.
Just as a piece of information for voters, one of the reasons why that question was asked, first off, these questions were submitted. I didn't want to pick the questions because I was accused of not picking good questions. So I solicited these questions from the public, from trusted people in the community, and none of which are the candidates at all. And I got more, they don't, no one knows which questions I picked. But one of the reasons why that question was on there is because what people may not realize is, even if the sales tax passes on the ballot in November, whatever board of commissioners is elected in November would then have to vote to levy that tax. So if voters choose to pass that tax, and then the Board of Commissioners that follows can choose not to levy that.
He went first.
He went first. What is your stance on this type of campaigning and those who are taking it? Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore?
If you can't tell already, I love the issues. I love taking the issues, breaking them down, and coming up with solutions. I tell people I'm a pragmatic problem solver. Uh, it disgusts me when I see attack ads that make inferences of who I am as a person, or who these other gentlemen are as a person. Or emails that are sent out under the cover of the good of all people attacking you and attacking me. And I've been attacked in those. I've been attacked on my faith, my political ideology, where I go to church, and it's disgusting. What we're seeing is, and you guys see it in the news, and everybody is to divide us. In our country, it's called e pluribus unum is a term that we use. It's on our money. It's, we're very different, we're plural, but we're united. So if these politicians, other politicians, want to divide us, just going to hurt our country as a whole. I love exchanging ideas. You can ask my family. I say, if you're not talking religion or politics, you're just not talking. And we have to do it in a civil manner. I, I mean, I appreciate the ideas of my opponent. I want to hear him. I wish he was here so we could talk about it, so I could hear his ideas, and you could hear his ideas. But it's disappointing. And this is about transparency. And I'm going to be transparent with you where I stand. And with regard to that, my faith is one of the most important things in my life. I live by it. Someone said, I don't have God in my campaign. Well, how do they know? God is in my campaign. I pray every day that when I come here, I can get the word out that I'm trying to communicate with you. Because it's a scary proposition, going out as an independent, not having a party to back you. You know? So my faith is critical to me. Where I go to church is my choice. It's the First Amendment. We want to honor the Second Amendment, we got to honor the First Amendment. We have to honor all the amendments. I believe in the rule of law, even when it doesn't go my way. And when you bit, beat up and denigrate the institutions of this country, you will destroy this country. And if that's your goal, I'll fight to the end to make sure that doesn't happen. So I am against these attack ads. I think they're wrong, and they should be stopped. And shame on those who are doing them.
I'm a Maconian first. Foremost in my life, what things are important to me is my family, my church, my faith. So let me just give you, this is what was in the press. That, uh, Mr. Gaston, I've never talked to this gentleman. He's come before the board a time or two, and he's put this ad in under some group that's can, I don't know, walk on water. Uh, why does Democrat Ronnie Beal give lip service to community values while spending public money on special interests and remaining in the party of open borders, corruption, and censorship? Are you kidding me? Uh, as you know, he didn't give no examples where I've ever voted to spend money on special interests. If you call, uh, helping our children in schools, uh, helping our folks with, with the mental health, with our housing program, and what we're working on every day, uh, every day as a commissioner, lip service, then he don't know me too well. He's never had a conversation with me. So, uh, in my ad coming out this week, you'll see where, uh, I don't believe Maconians will be swayed by dirty politics. I'm not a part of that. I've never contributed to that, nor will I. I've just, uh, we don't live in Washington or Raleigh. They can find us, and they do. And when the election's over, what you words are important. And what, what is said, win, lose, or draw, you won't forget. I won't forgive. So it's very important, I think, that we keep sensibility of what we're doing. Uh, yes, but you see these signs of the, the three folks running together. You've never seen a sign like that before in your life, ever, nowhere. So that's the reason, because we're Maconians first, and what's going to be good for Macon County. And I think my record over 16 years, you can go back and look at every vote I've ever put, and go back and check those votes, and the white card is shot. Thank y'all. Thanks for the question. And it's a dollar and 25 cents on 500 while Mr. Shields is going up there.
He and I talked about this this morning. Attack ad, that means squat to me. I know who I am, I know what I stand for, and, uh, that's, that's why I was raised. My father was a minister and, uh, been a school principal for 21 years. You're Franklin High School? I call worser things by 9 o'clock in the morning. I want somebody to put in a politi- political ad. Uh, I will say this and leave my family out of it, and they did. Uh, and I appreciate that. Uh, the, if you live in a fishbowl, you, you can't do much farming to me. And because the truth is, if you've gone over the line, I'll come and thank you.
Mr. Beal's going to start with this one.
Okay, good.
And then we'll go back down the line. Mr. Moore will be second. Perfect. Our state representatives, Senator Corbin and House Rep. Gillespie, do a great job advocating for Macon County on the state level. However, much of what they do focuses on state policies in North Carolina as a whole. County commissioners have a more local, specifically focused role in government. If elected, how would you provide us representation in Raleigh and with state agencies to benefit this county?
Well, let me say this. I think we're very fortunate to have the representations we have that, that goes to Raleigh every day. I don't go as much as they do, but I go pretty often. I was in Winston-Salem last week. We're talking, you know, we're finalizing the opioid settlement, and how we're going to dispense that money. We're working on several other things. I go back to Raleigh for the 14th and 15th for the legislative goals. Legislative goals to the North County County Commissioner Association. The goal that we put forward, if y'all don't know, we're having a real trouble in our health department because of safety tanks. It's putting us way behind of getting, because that's what wags the dog, is construction. Let's don't get confused. And construction's still going strong. We were talking about that before, uh, before we started. So I've been very involved in, in Raleigh. We have, uh, you know, from everywhere, from the, both governors, Governor McCrory. I was the only county commissioner on the statewide mental health task force. So I've, uh, but these policies, we are an arm of the state. That's what we have to remember. Unfunded mandates is real, and unfunded mandates affect us. So when they start coming down the line, I think the, the associations I'm associated with, not only that, but the National Association of Counties are the very way you fight those things. And I intend to do that with unfunded mandates. We have turned some around, but it's Kevin, it's Kevin or Carly the one, who I serve with both as county commissioners. If they were here, they would tell you that in Raleigh, it's a different world. They're not dealing with five folks. We're dealing with a lot of people. And everybody's pulling at them in different ways to go to the party. But here locally, we got to do what's right for Maconians. That means a trip to Raleigh? I'm willing to go. I went many times before, so. I've got 20 seconds. So if we, on county policies, let me just, let me jump back real quick. I got 18 seconds here. Uh, go back to the quarter cent sales tax. I wanted to say this. The quarter cent sales tax is, me and Gary run, me and Mr. Shields ran across this the other night. Don't get confused on what it is. Don't let these folks confuse you with their ad for what it is. It's simply a quarter cent. It was a dollar 25 on 500 dollars. I misquoted it. It was 2, I said 2 dollars. But it's a buck 25 on 500 dollars. So, uh, thank you so much. My time is up.
Well, since I've not been a commissioner before, I can't tell you exactly how I would go to Raleigh and lobby for the needs of Macon County, but I can tell you some things that I've done leading up to this point in my life, and especially in Highlands since I've been there. Number one, I've, you know, I've met Senator Corbin, uh, and Representative Gillespie. There's no doubt in my mind, I can work with them, I can connect with them. I consider myself a collaborator. Uh, on our Rotary badge, you get to pick what you want your name, and my name is collaborator. Because I feel like I have the gift of bringing people together to accomplish a goal. And I'll name a few that I've done. Is, I was the baseball coach. I resurrected the baseball program in Highlands, and I wanted to build a batting cage. And so I brought people together. Stephanie McCall was on the school board. She got me some money. I went to John Lepoli. He got me some money from, uh, a local hardware store, gave us some materials. I brought, uh, volunteer labor together, and we built a batting cage to make it happen. Uh, I led an effort at my church. We had 1.5 billion dollars in debt on our building. I had an idea, how many people could we get involved to chip away at this debt? We weren't going to go to one person and ask for 200,000 dollars. We went to 200 people and asked for maybe 100 dollars a month. We paid off our debt in three years. That was our goal, and I led that effort. Uh, I coordinated the covenants and restrictions in my neighborhood. We had 12 homes, our covenants had expired. I had to bring 12 people together and tell them rules on how they can and cannot use their home. And we did it. We had, a lot of people had to come together, and we had to change them, we had to rewrite them. It was challenging, but I coordinated that effort. Uh, I helped lead the vaccine initiative in Highlands. So we all know when vaccines were just coming out, people wanted to get vaccinated. We weren't sure how to do it. Well, I was able to get together with the Highlands Cacher's Health Foundation, which I serve on that board, with the president of our hospital, Tom Neal, with Mike Murphy, who was a technical expert. And we came together and we vaccinated 5,000 people at the rec park in Highlands. And that was a team effort, and I helped coordinate that. Uh, I also brought merchants together. In my first year, or my second year in being a business in Highlands, the economy was down, we were trying to bring people to Highlands. Now we have more people than we know what to do with. It's not a bad thing necessarily. And I went around door to door to merchants, and I helped raise money so that we could put a 10,000 dollar ad in Southern Living and bring people to Highlands. So I know how to collaborate, I know how to work together, and I'll do that for you if you elect me. Thank you.
I can tell you two good men. And a Senator Corbin and Representative Carl Gillespie. They've done an excellent job for Macon County and for their, this whole district. I was involved with them a few months ago in getting our grant grants for our broadband services. It would not gotten off the ground if it had been for those two people. Uh, we've done some work with our broadband, we're still working with it. We got grant grants, uh, up to 3.4 million dollars here recently, thanks to these people. Uh, broadband in Macon County is tough. It's hard to penetrate a mountain. Uh, but anyway, we'll continue to work on it. The, uh, we had a flood last year, uh, on our river here down by the, uh, Greenway. We had, uh, over, no, it was under 250,000 dollars in damage. And then this year, we had that funds to come out from the state designated for the Greenway here in Macon County. And it's in the process of being repaired right now. So they do an excellent job. I'm on the SCC Board of Trustees. We depend on these two people 100%. If it's about, let's see, if it's about a raise for the college or anything like that, they're, they're with us. And they come to have a meeting, we ask them to come to. Thank you very much.
Mr. Shields, go ahead, stay right there, because you're going to, you'll be the first one. Let me just ask the question, and then, since you're up. Obviously, in each of your platforms, all of our candidates always say they support law enforcement and our public safety agencies. Have you ever toured our sheriff's office or our detention center? And if not, if elected as our next commissioner, how important would that communication be to you?
Each commissioner, we have liaisons. Mr. Beal is a liaison to the law enforcement. Uh, I have nine groups that I'm a liaison to. A lot of times, if I need to know something about law enforcement, what it is, whether it's their facilities or the budget or what it may be, I go to Mr. Beal. He's in direct contact with, uh, with those people. The nine liaisons plus six more that I'm with, they wear me out. And, uh, but I do respect the law enforcement and what they do, but I have not been a, uh, person that's on their campus or on their place of business at law enforcement, not like Mr. Beal, because that's his liaison. And if, uh, something happens, I'll, I'll definitely, uh, put my name in the hat.
Mr. Beal, you haven't gone after Mr. Shields yet. Trying to mix it up, so.
It has been my privilege to serve as liaison to the Macon County Sheriff's Department for the past 16 years. Uh, we worked on 16 different budgets. Uh, I was, the sheriff's department, along with some others, are some of the most important things that we do as county commissioners. You think of the EMS, sheriff's department, those things, you provide vital services to it. Uh, I've always had a good relationship with Sheriff Holling. Uh, and I've been in the jail as a commissioner, uh, many times. And, uh, I appreciate the more we worked on getting our deputies money when, uh, when nobody else in the county got a raise. Now why, if you put on a, a bulletproof vest and go to work, you're in a different class of people, in my opinion. And we have, uh, we have a great sheriff's department. Of course, there's going to be some changes going on with the new sheriffs coming in. And, uh, but I look forward to working, uh, with Sheriff Holbrooks, just like I have with Sheriff Holling for 16 years. And, uh, and the employees there that, that do work, that unless you're with them and around them, you have no clue. They set new records every month for calls from the sheriff's department, as we are at the EMS. So, and they got to go. You just don't say, well, we'll get around to it. It don't matter how short we are on people, how short the deputies are in law enforcement. Let's just face it, they're really struggling to keep folks. That's the reason we're trying our best to keep our pay rate up where it's at least competitive, and our insurance that we provide for our employees, our county employees, not just the sheriff's department. But when you see a sheriff's deputy out here, you don't know what that sheriff's deputy is. He's got to go home. The main thing is, we want him to go home at the end of the day. That's the whole goal. So, uh, I'm very proud to have served as liaison in our sheriff's department. We've worked on budgets, we have increased the equipment. Uh, is it mine? I've enjoyed my time as a sheriff's department liaison. Thank you.
I, I have not been in a jail yet. But I did mention earlier, I spent 12 years in law enforcement. I spent, I spent plenty of time in local jails and prisons interviewing inmates. I, I know what it's like behind the barge. It's not always a pleasant place, that's for sure. Our law enforcement have a difficult job, especially those that serve in the detention center. We have to have a safe and effective detention facility. Supporting our law enforcement is key to maintaining civility in our county. Exactly how we do that, I don't have all the answers. I'm, I'm going to look at the budget very carefully. But number one, we have to pay them adequately. And even more important is, we have to train them adequately. Because a lot of times, law enforcement, it's quiet, it's quiet, it's quiet, it's life threatening within a second. And we ask them to go into the gap for us and to protect us. So if we don't train them, they don't have the right muscle memory. For those instances, we're in big trouble. I'll support law enforcement. I'll work with Sheriff Holbrooks. I'll work with the people at the, at the jail to find out what we can do. I, I was asked in my Franklin Press interview, uh, about Franklin High School and the other infrastructure projects, and I said, you know, we have to take them one at a time. I can't sit up here and promise you that we can build a new jail in five years or three years. I, I just don't know. So we have to look at the budget, see where the money is, and then make that decision. We have to make informed decisions. I'm not a tax and spend liberal like my opponent says that I am. I'm very cautious, and I will come to this board as a very cautious commissioner. But I will spend money when we need to spend money to take care But I will spend money when we need to spend money to take care of our county. Let me tell you, we are not a poor county. We're not poor. We don't need to act like it. And we don't need to talk like it. So, we're gonna take care of our Sheriff's Department, we're gonna take care of our schools. Thank you.
I need to say one thing.
Sure.
I have been in your local jail. If you go there now, you'll see my card up there. Back when I was a young fella, you know, when you're a preacher son, you gotta have, you gotta carry the weight. And sometimes, you get caught carrying the weight. But I wasn't there for any drugs, alcohol. We were just duking it up outside. And I got caught because I didn't run. And so, the reason I'm telling you that is because we were at another meeting here a few weeks ago, what's the name, uh, it's an old jail now, what's, it's, it's the Jim Camp. The Jim Camp.
Jim Club.
And I got my card up there, so I said, oh Lord, I better tell them this. So, we go by there, they said, well, he didn't even say a thing about that.
That was not what I was, um, thinking with that. But that just made my whole night. And just for disclosure, if you didn't already know, I don't know who does not know this, but my husband is a sheriff's deputy. I do not want it to seem like I was hiding that fact when that question was asked. He is a sheriff's deputy, he's here. And I did not come up with that question, that question was also submitted. So, I have one last question that everyone will take a turn to answer. And then you'll each get three minutes for closing statement, any specific topic that you want to touch on, all of that. If, if, one of the reasons why, and if you want to talk about the high school at that point, you could, you can, if you want to elaborate more than what you did during the quarter to the sales tax, one of the reasons why I haven't asked that specifically here tonight is because we've, every forum and every meeting and everything, that's the number one thing that people ask. You've had the opportunity to address that so many times. I wanted to, to have a forum and a platform to ask other questions that, that are equally as important, and that are more than just what's in people's faces right now. Because being a county leader is, is far more than, than what's in the headlines right now. So. The last question is, Macon County is facing a housing crisis. There are lots of things that factor into that. One of the things, like the short-term rental issue that Highlands is facing, what can be done on the county level to address our housing needs? Mr. Moore, have you got a chance? I mean, I don't, I don't know, I've lost track.
I think I'm next.
Y'all can rock, paper, scissors, I don't.
Of course, she'll be last.
Any chance I get, I'll steal Ronnie's thunder, so. Because I know you're working on some projects, but I won't mention those specific projects. So, affordable housing, workforce housing, significant challenge. What can the county do? Well, we can work together with other agencies. Ronnie can probably tell you, we can work with Dogwood Health Trust. There's a project out there now called Healthy Homes. And they're trying to keep people in their homes, and trying to keep those homes healthy. So, we can coordinate those efforts to make sure people have heat, they have a roof, they have other important things. If they have mold in their house, we can have mold remediation. And Dogwood's funding a lot of that for our poorest people in the community. People who are below 60% of the average median, of the average median income, which is about $36,000. So, the, the county can help coordinate that. We have a department that helps run that and gets grant money from the federal government and from the state government and from Dogwood in order to go out and insulate people's homes and to fix those basic things. So, we can do that as a county, and a lot of that comes in the form of grants. John Fay is in charge of that department, and everything I've heard is he does a great job of reaching out. Also, we can work with our towns. Town of Highlands, Town of Franklin, they can control sewer and water. And those are the biggest obstacles to housing in these mountains, as you well know. You can control zoning with septic and water. So, as the towns extend sewer and water, we can have more housing opportunities. So, the county's not in charge of sewer and water, but we can work with those town commissioners. The Aldermen in Franklin, one is here, Ms. Reed is here. And we can work with them to try to figure out what kind of projects we can build. I mean, there's a lady that built an amazing project underway. She spent $2.5 million of her own money to extend water and sewer to Clark's Chapel. She's gonna have 145 home sites below $175,000. So, we need to support those people that take initiative, and I believe in that. The market will come to the demand, but county governments have to make it accessible.
And that lady is 90 years old.
Yes.
You heard me mention before when I was up about our housing crisis. Let me tell you how that came about. Why are we just now hearing about that? Well, the real estate market was so hot. Here's the rules in North Carolina. I'm renting from Jerry Moore. I'm a good renter, I pay my rent, I've done well. There's not, Jerry sees the market, and he said, I'm selling this place. So, North Carolina, they can be out as little as 16 days. Once that house is, is on the market and gonna close, they can notify, Mr. Moore can say, alright, Bill, you gotta be out in 16 days. So, what's happened is we've got a new kind of homeless. It has created a new kind of homeless. And that homeless is, those homeless folks are hardworking people who work every day. We have them in motels today. Of course, I'm associated strongly with No Wrong Door. We met with Dogwood Trust, but anyway, let me finish that story. So, they're in the motel, a man and a woman, both of them fully employed, no substance abuse, two teenage kids. They're paying high, we're paying high, we're helping with that. But that don't work, that's, that's no solution. But it gives them shelter. We have a lady who went to work today, who works every day at a restaurant beside a hospital. Come on. You guys. She's working there right now, living in her car. She's at work right now, living in her car, talked to her today. So, the housing, what can we do? That was a question from Brittany. So, we met with Dogwood Trust last week. Dogwood Trust was here, we spent the day with them, looking at different projects that we might be able to build a partnership with. Can the county get in the housing business? No. Are there such things as affordable housing? No. There's not, there's not no such thing. So, what are we looking for? Are we looking for transitional housing, somewhere where these people can stay for six to eight months, and we can try to find them something? There is, I know, this is really important, Brittany. There's a policy, there's a, there's some money out and our funding available now. If it's in two miles of a grocery store, on the web, what it says is relatively flat ground. We don't live on flat ground. But the money is there to purchase five acres minimum for future housing. If you know that, I've talked to a lot of realtors, they've sent me some things, and, and we're looking at that together. The Dogwood Trust, talked to them today, they'll be back, we're looking at a project for homes and with them. The problem is, they don't disperse their money until January. So, we're trying to work that through Southwest Commission. So, we are working on those things, but as far as the county being involved in housing, to be truthfully honest, there's not a whole lot we can do. We've worked with our housing program, we have one, one in my family is a, I'm not.
I'll consider that last 15 seconds a county government update.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, lines of the story. The, October 15th, 14th last year, not just last week, my stepson, who's in the, in the military, worked with the EMS, Drew. He saw, he thought he and his wife, they got married, October 14th. Anna and I had a new house up on Trumont, it's new to us. And I've got a little shack up on Mill Creek before you get through the expensive gate. I've got a little blue house up there that I've had forever. But anyway, what happened was, they were getting married, then they were going on a honeymoon, then he had to leave for Kansas to go to school out there. And so, I was trying to help them find a place to rent. Son, you couldn't find a place to rent. So, the wife and I kept looking at each other, says, now, he's going to Arizona, we gotta do something here. And so, guess what we did? We went to the little blue house. And they got to stay at the big house. And then when they came back off the honeymoon and stuff, he went to Kansas. The wife stayed there. Then, when, when last, few months ago, he had to go to the Marshals for training down in Georgia. And guess what? They're still there. My wife and I, we live on Mill Creek too. There's no place to rent or buy.
The, we're gonna take the last three minutes, and they can talk about any issues that they want to close in, and to wrap up. I do want to say again, because I'm not gonna come back up here, thank you all for coming out here and, and listening to what these gentlemen had to say. And thank you to everyone who is watching live or go back and watch it. I just, for my own little plug, just know that I, I'm, I volunteer to do this. And so, when you're speaking about this forum, or if you're speaking about me or anything that I do, please be kind, because I might be able to carry it, but that does not mean that it is not so heavy. And I want to continue to do this and to provide this service to our community and everything that I do with the newspaper. And it, it gets very difficult. My children are becoming an age to where they're, they're asked about what their mother does, and they're, they're aware of that. And at some point, I have to decide if, if putting them, if putting them in that circumstance or that situation to answer for me is something that I want to do. And I'm not an elected official, and I just do this because I want all residents, regardless of what you believe in or who you support, to be as informed as possible in everything that you do. And I have done this since 2011, so that's 12 years now. Despite the fact that I might look 16 years old, I am not. I say that as my gray hairs are showing, so I, I've done this for a really long time. And I, I never miss a commissioner's meeting, and I've never missed a school board meeting, and I never miss these things. And I actually missed a school board meeting last night because I had a sick kid. Typically, I do not, and I have, all of this information is like waterfall that gets pushed on me. And I, and I started to realize that so many people didn't know this stuff. And so many people, not everybody watches government meetings for fun. And not everybody enjoys attending a six-hour-long commissioner meeting once a month. That's fun for me, and I enjoy it. And I just assumed that everybody knew all of these things, that I knew. And when I realized that they didn't, I wanted to do everything I can to provide that information in, in a way that is quick and readily available. And so, if you don't like that I do it or how I do it, just, please be kind and remember that if you're on your keyboard and you're speaking to me, that I'm happy to speak to you about it face-to-face, and I've done that over coffee with people I disagree with. And I would have so much more respect for you if you did that than to, than to type about anything that I do professionally online. So, thank you all for coming.
Gary's getting in first.
And she's a Rotaryian, we'll be together tomorrow. Oh, lost my train of thought. Okay. This is what I want you to do, either in your memory or in pen. Get that right, Stephanie?
Yep.
That will tell you, there, there's two pieces there. There's an assessment, and there's a survey. And you hit on that. That will tell you why we need a new Franklin High School. Also, on this same, maconnc.org, you will be able to click on the ADA. It's a video of how bad the Franklin High School is regarding to our handicapped kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight and being involved in your government. I wish we had three more chairs filled here tonight. And I think that needs to be mentioned. Where are our future commissioners that want to represent you? I'll tell you, I've been at every forum. I've answered every question that's been submitted to me by any newspaper, regardless of their ideology. Because I want to represent you, and if I'm gonna represent you, I'm gonna have to answer all your questions, whether you're Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, Green Party, you pick it. I'm here for you, I will represent you. That is one of the main reasons I felt like at a local level, I could run as an independent, unaffiliated candidate, is so there would be no question who I represent. But I've been questioned who I voted for in 2020, who I voted for in 2016. And I've told those folks, it's none of their business who I vote for. That's between me and the ballot box. That's one of the freedoms our government gives us. And when you start oppressing people about who they vote for or where they go to church, or what their religion is, we're in big trouble, folks. We're in big trouble. You might think your party's in charge now, whether you're Republican, Democrat, but it may not always be in charge. Look around the world. Look what's going on in Russia, Ukraine. It's concerning. Look at China, they're all over the world. I believe in freedom, regardless of your party, regardless of what you think. And I want to engage in that. We have serious issues in Macon County. The quarter cent sales tax. If you do not believe in it, then you do not believe in a new Franklin High School. Period. $2 million, you can't find it that easy. It's one piece of the puzzle. Yes, you're gonna have to find some money in the regular budget, and you're gonna have to raise property taxes. We, we have no other way to do it, unless you do not want that high school. Unless you don't want a future for this county. Go online, look at the websites, look at what they built in Hendersonville. That will create jobs in this county, that will bring the best teachers, that will reward our students and our teachers to let them know that we care about them. You go to the school now, you can learn there, you can definitely learn there. But you will be able to learn a lot better in a facility that tells you, you're important, student, you're important teacher. Can't pay our teachers enough, but we can put them in a good facility. Same thing with law enforcement. We can't always pay them what they're worth, but we gotta give them the right equipment. We gotta give them the best pay that we possibly can, and so they can work in a proper environment. And I'm for that. And I'll figure out a way to do it. We have big issues, broadband, substance abuse, mental health. Give me my warning. You forgot? Okay, I'll wrap it up. So, I have a work ethic, I have experience, criminal justice, own my own business, financial services. I'm the treasurer for the Rotary Club of Highlands, I'm the treasurer for the Highlands Cashers Health Foundation. I've been the chamber president. I've been on the Tourist Development Commission. I know how to work with people. You want me for your county commissioner. So, spread the word, and I appreciate your vote. Jerry Moore, County Commissioner, District 1. Thank you.
Forgot to time him, so I'm not gonna time you.
Oh, great.
Well, I think after 16 years, there's not a whole lot. I mean, I have a voting record. If you don't know where I stand on issues, all you gotta do is ask me. My door is always open. People have a tendency to, to find me wherever I'm at. And that's great, that's the reason I do this. And I'm interested in helping folks. I've been so blessed to come in contact, either through schoolteachers, Sunday schoolteachers, the people who, my grandmother, who really influenced my life. And, and she taught me, and I think, and I worry about that in the future, about our younger generations of where they will be. They don't seem to be as community-minded as some of us that came along. But I'm, I'm running, this is important. Let me tell you why elections are important. Let's take this year's budget. This year's budget contained decent races for our employees, for our Sheriff's Department, for all of our employees that provide the services for this county. New assemblies. I believe if I'm not, we had six runs missing yesterday by ground and both. That's about the average. So, the Sheriff's Department, we're on a rotation of cars. That rotation would have been stopped, our school funding would have been stopped. The vote was three to two on the budget. You get one more person that don't wanna, that thinks, well, we don't need that budget. You get one more person that don't wanna, that thinks, "Well, we don't need that budget." It was a great budget. Our county manager, our finance people, we all worked on the budget for hours. Not one reason was given for voting against the budget, from the two folks, our two colleagues who voted against it. But one more vote. Does anybody know what happens if you don't pass a budget in a county, in North Carolina? Let me tell you what happens. On June thirtieth, the new budget starts July one at 12:01 a.m. And if that budget is not passed, you revert back to last year's budget automatically, and there's no change in it. There's no coming back and saying, "Well, let's take another vote." That ain't the way it works. So, elections are important. People are important, how their views are, and I agree with Mr. Moore. I certainly wish our opponents were here, that can seem to pat all this stuff in the paper, and I don't do Facebook, I mean, I don't have time. If you're a county commissioner, and if your place not full, and if you've got as many employees as I have, and you work every day, your place pretty full, if you're doing your job. So, I ask for your support, elections are important. If you talk to your friends, I've got a record of sixteen years of service, and I think that that record, I'll put that record up against anybody's, anywhere, anytime. And, but I appreciate y'all being here, Brittany, thank you. We know it takes time from your family, and you don't have to do this. And Nick, we appreciate you allowing your wife to do that, because that leads... To do this. So, he has to babysit.
Who's he babysitting right now?
Who are the babies?
One of them's here.
Oh, one baby, yeah, he ain't got a baby no more, though. So, it's all about families, folks, it's all about, we all know each other, and if you don't know me, just come by and find me, and we'll talk about whatever you want to, if I can help you in any way. We may not be able to do everything, we might not know who to call. So, but I appreciate y'all coming out, thank you for being here, I do appreciate Brittany in the years that she's covered, she's always been fair. Sometimes she can blister you, that's fine. And, but she's always fair, and she always, and she's a hard worker. And without her sense of legal, women voters went out, I think you mentioned this. We have no forum like this, not for school board members, and I really miss that. And so, but Brittany, thank you, and thank you all for coming out. My name's Ronnie Beal, and I look forward to serving you at least four more years. I'm still fairly young, yes. So, but we'll keep working hard, and thank you for being here. Brittany, you got to...
And the library let us use this after closing, if you noticed, the doors are locked, you heard that lock in, so try to clean up as best as you can, so they, you can leave now, because they let us do it after they normally would close. So, thank you for the library for that. If you don't know, this beautiful facility is partly funded by the Macon County Board of Commissioners. Y'all have a good night.
Before you leave, before you leave, please, please, I got one thing to say, and that we're not very many people here tonight, which means there are a lot of people out there who missed great answers to questions. It is up to us to care enough to get these three good men elected. So, you gotta tell everybody you come in contact with, "I took notes." It's gonna be in the paper. Take notes with you when you're talking to folks, and say why it's important they get elected.
Okay, thank you everyone for watching.